Well, I'd like to welcome everyone, all the administrators, the staff, principals, the SRO carns, thank you for being here, Sherry Hodges with the link and our students. Are you ready to, this is Matthew Rivers, fourth grade at Matt B Elementary, thank you for coming tonight and leading us in our pledge, we're gonna have a moment of silence and then you can start, okay? All right, just have a moment of silence. Question? All right, Mr. Rivers, would you like to come up here?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate that. We have no public comment tonight. Okay, board members, you've been given the minutes for November the 10th meeting prior to the meeting, if I hear no objections, we will approve those by consent. Now, we're gonna turn our meeting over to our chief financial officer, Mr. Kaski, for our October financial review and draft presentation of audited financial statements.
Madam Chair, Dr. Ballinger, members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
Prior to this evening, you all received a copy of the financial review for the month of October, are there any questions related to that report?
Questions?
All right, so tonight, we have with us Mr. Brian Nicholson from our financial auditors of Malden and Jenkins, and now I'll invite Mr. Nicholson up to present our draft audit report for the FY 24-25 year.
Good evening, Dr. Ballinger, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Good evening.
So, my name is Brian Nicholson, Malden Jenkins, I'm gonna go over the draft version of the 2025 audit financial statements for the district, just a little brief background on why they are the draft financial statements, for those that aren't familiar, the Office of Management and Budget, the OMB, issued the 2025 compliance supplement, of which part of our testing is based on, and with that being delayed, typically, we get that in May each year, with that being delayed, the due date is now extended to January 9th for all final uploads to the state. The good news is, your report will actually be dated December 5th, this past Friday, so once we get a few representations back, we'll finish the final uploads and you all will be compliant with the state deadline requirements.
So, you've been giving us an audit report in May or June, so what's different now, I guess?
So, what's different between the draft?
You're giving a draft, because I don't remember draft happening in May yet, is this something you?
No, so typically, we present the final financial statement, but part of our testing is based on what we call the compliance supplement, so whenever an entity spends over $750,000 in federal awards, of which the district does, you have to have a single audit, and so one of our reports is the report over the single audit, however, we cannot issue the financial statements in that report until that compliance supplement is issued, that didn't come out until the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So, with that, the State Department of Education for South Carolina extended the due date to January 9th, however, we have completed our audit procedures as of December 5th, had that supplement been issued in May when it typically was, your report day would be mid-November or early November. Any questions on that so far?
Okay.
So, here's a brief agenda, I'll go over the engagement team, how it timeline, the results of the 2025 financial statements, some financial information, and then we've got some required communications, of which I'm not gonna read all of them, they're required to be either presented orally or in writing, tonight, we're gonna do a little bit of both, and if you have any questions as we go throughout presentations, don't hesitate to ask.
Hold on just one second, these two aren't working. There you go, that one's working, that one's not up yet, okay. Thank you, thank you, all right, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, all right, so just to reintroduce myself, my name is Brian Nicholson, Malden Jenkins, I was the lead director for the district's June 30, 2025 audit, Trey Scott was our quality control reviewer, what that means is, once we have finished our audit procedures and we feel comfortable with the opinions that we're rendering, at that point, we can date the audit report, of which, again, is December 5th.
I guess we're... Technical difficulties.
Do you want me to say on the next slide and y'all can change it? I've got a copy up here too that I can follow. All right, there we go, so the audit timeline is really broken into three segments, segment one is what we call our planning interim procedures, and as I said before, that compliance supplement typically comes out in May, so during May and June, we typically do the prelim work for the single audits, of which is typically done before we get to the year-end audit procedures or fieldwork, that's where the majority of our testing is done, and then segment three is our review, audit quality control, and the presentation of our results. The results of the 2025 audit, we conducted our audit and, of course, we generally accept the auditing standards and government audit standards, we have issued a unmodified or clean opinion on the district's 2025 financial statements, we also issued our report on internal controls over financial reporting and compliance, our yellow vote report, we had no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies in internal control to report. We did conduct a single audit, of which I've already kind of briefly discussed, the district's major federal program was the child nutrition cluster of around 7.5 million, again, we have an unmodified opinion, no material weaknesses, and no significant deficiencies as well. The biggest thing I want to point out here is that note one is where the district's main significant accounting policies are presented in the financial statements, the district uses various estimates as part of its financial reporting process, and we do evaluate those estimates throughout the audit process as well. The two bullet points I want to point out here is the, the second one, relationship with management, unfortunately, an audit is an invasive process, we ask for a lot of information, and not once did Kevin and his team tell us we couldn't have certain information or tell us it's gonna be a minute, we got it very prompt and quickly, of which makes our drive a lot easier as the auditors, and there were no past adjustments during the audit as well. The last, the last bullet point here, I kind of want to point out, auditor independence, our professional standards require us that we maintain a level of independence throughout the audit process, and we have maintained that independence throughout. So, there's supposed to be a graph here. There's, there's supposed to be a graph here.
You go ahead and tell us by you.
I'm sorry? So, even though you can't see it, but if you look at the financial statements, at the statement of revenue changes, statement of revenues expenditures and changes fund balance. The district's 2025 fund balance for the general fund, the main operating fund of the district, was approximately 9.4 million compared to 12.9 million since June 30, 2024, a slight decrease of 3.4 million, the district is required to have at least 8% of unassigned fund balance in the general fund every year, it's a state compliance matter, and the district has approximately 12% of unassigned fund balance of total expenditure, so the district is in compliance with that state mandated compliance requirement. New Gatsby's implemented this year, I kind of keep out for next year, the district was required to implement Gatsby 101, compensate absences, if you're one of those, that kind of compares to this year and last year, you're not gonna see a huge difference because it did not have a material effect in the June 30, 2025 financial statements, next year, statement 1 of 3, financial reporting model improvements, is required to be implemented, this is more of a presentation, Gatsby, the biggest impact that it will have for Chesterfield County School District is the management discussion analysis, they're asking for more detailed MDNA and more analysis throughout that report, and if the district had any business type activities, those would be changed as well. Lastly, I did want to say that we do provide pre-quarterly CPE to all of our clients, most of it is financial based, every now and then, there are some tailored more top board members, so if any of y'all are ever interested or need CPE, don't hesitate to reach out to Kevin or myself, and we can get you added to that. Any comments, any questions?
Any questions?
I've got one, I guess it'd probably be Kevin, '22 to '23, what drew our fund balance up 3 million dollars, because we didn't keep doing that.
So, that, that was a little bit of an anomaly year, that was a transition between, it has a lot to do with the vacancies, that was when we were still having a true vacancy, we were splitting classes and things like that, not filling those with contracted employees or long-term subs, but it was truly splitting classes among teachers and increasing those class sizes, and by doing that, you really are truly saving that full salary with the vacancy rather than mitigating that vacancy with a, with a more expensive contracted employee or at least putting someone in there as a long-term sub to, to teach those classes, but switching to the other model where we're now employing contracted teachers or filling that, that role in some way rather than just leaving it vacant all year specifically with our teacher positions, that's, that's what's causing that spike now, we're not seeing that safety anymore.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity to serve the district, should you have any questions in the future, don't hesitate to reach out.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chief Academic Officer, Ms. Stubbs, can you give us your curriculum report?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Ballinger, members of the board, you have the curriculum report, but I'd like to highlight several items, the first The first is the Sheraw FFA chapter that attended the national convention. Sheraw High School is recognized as a two-star gold national chapter. There are around 100 educational programs in South Carolina, and Sheraw was one of 12 to be recognized. In addition, I want to point out that Mr. Andrew Smith, the electricity instructor at Sheraw High School, received a $1,000 grant from Winchester's River to assist in funding of a classroom project. And students are, the electricity and building teams, building classes are teaming up together, and they are reviving and rebuilding golf carts. And I actually had the opportunity to see their photo album at the Market on Mount Market, which was really cool. They are doing some great things. With our elementary schools, we are really working hard to align our intervention and our assessments. We're working with our literacy coaches, the curriculum team and the literacy coaches are working together to make sure that we are aligned to the science of reading and that everyone knows the expectations when it comes to making sure that we have explicit reading instruction and that we are monitoring student progress. You'll see that there's a lot going on in the fine arts program. Sheraw, excuse me, Chesterfield Ruby Middle and Chesterfield High School. Core students performed at the Veterans Day program to honor our veterans. The Sheraw High Symphonic Band also contributed with music. Jefferson Elementary's fourth and fifth graders presented a special Veterans Day program to honor veterans as well. And Sheraw High National Arts Society students are selling creations. They've had several things on Facebook, and they're working with the building and construction students to sell wooden Christmas trees. Matt the Elementary students performed at the Southern Christmas show on November 18th. The Christmas card contest is going on, and I think we've already had some winners there. On the next page, you will see all of the festivities that are happening during the month of December. So would invite by anyone that would like to attend. The federal programs wanted to recognize Central High School for all that they did with recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. The school had lots of different celebrations, which included door decorating, an interactive bulletin board, trivia each day, and lots of different activities for the students. Wanted to point out, and we'll talk about this later on in the meeting, but next year for the '26-'27 school year, we are working to offer year-long algebra because we know that that is a difficult subject for some students. And that way, they will have, rather than it being a semester class, they'll have a class, a first class, which will be a local board-approved class in the fall, and then they'll take that algebra class in the spring. We're also hoping to expand Biology I to a year-long class. That is an EOC class, and so students would take that integrated science in the fall and then follow up with the biology, and they would receive two credits.
Same thing for Algebra II, they'll receive two credits?
Yes. For the Algebra I, yes.
So what's the reason?
So we've looked at our data, and some of our students are not performing the way that we want them to. That is a lot to do in a semester, and so we just feel like it would be, it would meet the needs of our students better. Some students will have the opportunity to do it as a semester, but other students may need that year-long to really prepare them fully.
Back in the day, you used to just have year-long classes?
We did. You're correct.
So we're going back to it?
Well, no, we're not going back to that, but we are looking at our data, and Dr. Ballinger has really, you know, looked at this. And as a team, we've discussed this, we've discussed it with principals, that we know that for some of our students, this is what we need to do. It's in the best interest of students.
And a lot with that year-long algebra, you can also have that remediation built in that needs to occur with that. So when you look at our data, our data does tell us that we are not being very successful on that component. And so this is a way to help us improve our scores for those students that are identified that need that year-long course.
So you will, you may have some students that still take one, so that's what we're reading?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Wanted to point out that the academic bowl banquet will be held on December 16th. Those students will be recognized at the January board meeting. We had over 60 12th grade students that were, that became career-ready during wind testing. EOCs are actually going on now. They will continue through the 17th. The district-wide spelling bee will be held at ELC on the 27th of January. And also wanted to point out, we'll have more about this later next month, but we had around 33 students to recently qualify for the gifted and talented program after taking I-Ready in the winter, so we're excited about that. So we look forward to serving those students in the gifted and talented program. Any questions?
Thank you. All right. Dr. King, our Chief of Student Services, you're going to give us a discipline report?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, Dr. Ballinger, Madam Chair, members of the board. So I would like to go over the discipline data for the month of November. Once again, this data is an overview of discipline trends throughout the district within our grade levels. So we'll start with high school. So our top five high school infractions for the month of November, it's been pretty consistent throughout. The number one infraction was cell phone violations, 15.8%. Tardies at 12.5%. Truancy or truant students at 8.1%. Disrupting class at 6.9%. And inappropriate language is at 5.1%. Totaling about 48.4% of our incidents reported in power school for high school. For our middle school, our top five infractions for the month of November were, tell me that number one, was inappropriate behavior at 25.3%. Disrupting class at 12.7%. Hit-kick-push at 8.3%. Truant at 5.6%. And disrespect at 5.6%. This gives us a total of 57.5% of our incidents reported in power school for middle school infractions. And at the elementary level, our top five infractions for elementary and primary was number one, inappropriate behavior at 31.3%. Two, hit-kick-push at 17.8%. Bus violations at 14.7%. Disrupting class at 7.4%. And truant at 5.5%. Totaling 76.7% of incidents reported in power school. So district-wide, our top five infractions for the month of November was coming at number one is inappropriate behavior at 17.4%. Disrupting class at 9.2%. Hit-kick-push was at 6.8%. Phone violations were at 6.6%. And truant students were at 6.6, which totals 46.6% of incidents reported in power school district-wide. So some trends to kind of look at. Inappropriate behavior is steadily increased from August with 11.6% to November at 17.4%. So this remains the more persistent concern. And of course, inappropriate behavior, a lot of stuff is lumped into that within the schools and the classroom, how they categorize it. Attendance-related incidences between truant and tardies fluctuated. October, we saw a notable spike in truancy at 16.8%, but in November, it dropped to 6.6%. Phone violations are decreasing, suggesting possible improvements in device management and enforcement or enforcement. Hit-kick-push remains consistent between 6 to 8%, indicating ongoing physical behavior monitoring is needed. And classroom disruptions, it came back on the scene in November at 9.2%, so signaling some renewed attention to student engagement and behavior management. Any questions?
I have one, maybe two. I noticed the trend there, especially in high school. Central High, Sheraw High, high numbers. What's the end results here? What are we shooting for? What's the end result? At the end of the year, what's going to happen? Because if this continues, are we going to have students in school or what? What's the end result? What we shooting for?
So the end result for what our data is telling us, it's going to help us?
When we come in here, the discipline.
So what we're looking at is, you know, from administrative standpoint, we're looking at, okay, what policies need to be adjusted? What other resources need to be put in place? Those are the things that we look at. What are the type of interventions do we need to bring into the schools and supports to find out how we can address certain things? That's what we look at when we look at the data. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. And do we know of any other districts that, I'm sure all of them have issues, that have implemented programs? Have you been around long enough to find out what other districts are doing?
Well, I mean, it depends upon what the needs are that are identified because each school has its own identity and has its own problems and/or own successes. And so you can't just say it's a one-size-fit-all to, you know, it may be that you have to be strategic in what you're doing at one school versus doing at another school to try to find that support. Now, the one thing that, you know, when we look at behaviors overall, you know, the one thing that we need definitely in this county is, you know, we need some behavioral interventionists to help us work with our principals, work with our teachers, finding ways to put intervention plans in place and provide supports in the building and in the classroom on a regular basis. And that's something that we lack at this point in time. And so as we are currently looking through ways to help support principals and teachers in the classroom, you know, we're still limited with what resources we have available to us, but we are trying to find ways that we can improve the supports that we are giving.
Dr. Chavon, do you have a question?
How many absent counts is, I think is, at a certain point, when you get, and it's different for levels, once you get to like three absences, then they start the truancy process where they start making the phone calls. And then when it gets above, it progresses throughout. And then at some point, they can even become chronically truant. But that's why we have the truancy teams that are at the school level that are supposed to be addressing these issues with our truancy. And the good thing is, I mean, as we see in the trend, they are being reported and we are addressing it. But the problem that we see in a lot of our schools, especially at the high school level, is as far as with the attendance, is getting the parents on board with the thought that, you know, your kids need to be at school. It has, I have seen that it has been a struggle, especially when they're at age 17, 18, to where the parents feel like, you know, they can make their own decisions and whatnot. And school is kind of, gets put on the back burner somewhat. And that's something that we have to address, you know, with the parents and reemphasizing the importance of attendance. Because I think we got spoiled with COVID a lot of times, and we still trying to get out of that. And COVID was, five years ago, it seemed like we still reaping the effects of what it did as far as the importance of attending school. But the things that we're trying to put in place to boost that morale as far as getting kids to come to school, I think that's a good start. So we had a starting point.
And last question, and first I want to congratulate you. With the cell phone issue, you did say we're going to decline. And I'm not looking for a scientific answer or a data point. In your opinion, what do you think about this positive outcome in reducing the cell phone damage?
Just being consistent with how it's being enforced. I think the consistency throughout and accountability piece and kind of not making it not so much punitive always. And a lot of times, a lot of this, a lot of the inconsistencies can be corrected with just a conversation versus a write-up. But I think that just being consistent with how it's enforced, I think that makes a difference district-wide. And just knowing that, you know, the goal is not to get them put out of, put them out of school for having cell phones, but to kind of make sure that we have things in place to just reinforce. And I think another thing that helps with it too is the state laws, the state policy. So we can, that gives us some teeth behind what we're doing when it's coming down from the state. So it's not like you can fight it a whole lot if it's something that's done statewide. So that helped too. I think by it being a statewide initiative, that helped even more.
Dr. King?
Yes, sir.
What kind of cooperation you do from parents?
You know I'm live. I get, it varies. We have great parents. We do. I will say that. But a lot of times, it just depends because every parent, you know, until, you know, their child is the best thing that they have, and I understand that. And a lot of times, it's hard to convince parents that their kids are doing X, Y, Z. But the support has been there for the most part. But sometimes you'll have situations to where, sometimes parents can maybe in denial a little, a bit about what their child will do outside of their presence. But we see it on a daily basis, and I especially see it, especially with those expulsion hearings and you have those hard conversations in those meetings. But I do think we have a lot of parental support in our district. But every now and again, you will see to where it's not where it needs to be.
My concern is that I do know that we're meeting with the Ministry of Alliance in this county. That's going on now. We've been trying to do these community meetings in areas. Somewhere along the line, everybody's going to have to get a table. And we're going to have to address some of these issues. And it's going to be, it's going to, you know, we're going to have to take some serious, some serious following this. And we're going to have to come up with some kind of way to get parents involved back with the kids.
And I would agree, and our buildings are open. I mean, you know, we invite parents to come in every single day, and we'll have any conversation we need to with our parents. And because it is a partnership between the educational, between the school and the home. And so we want to, we want to work with the parents. But sometimes there is that difference of point of view from what we see versus what the parent sees. Or kind of as Dr. King was saying, you know, the expectation of what we may have versus what somebody else's expectation is. But I think when it comes to attendance, Mr. Sweeney, is that it's that, it's a culture shift. As Dr. King mentioned, back with COVID, it was, I don't know how many times I heard parents just put them on virtual or just put me on virtual. Well, that's not an option now. And you still get those parents that'll say, well, they'll just do the work at home. Well, no, that's not what you can do anymore. You know, we just cannot allow students to do work at home unless it's work that is identified from the school that this is what we're doing with you. It's not just parental choice at this point in time. And so there are avenues and things that we can do as a school district when it comes to virtual learning, but it's just not readily available for everybody whenever they want it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. King.
Thank you.
See you again.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Now we'll turn the floor over to Dr. Ballinger for his superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. And I would like to welcome everybody that's joining us here in person and joining us online tonight. Thank you for being active in the school system and engaged in your child's education. So there's just a few updates that I have. And there's one update that I did want to kind of discuss with the board concerning the high school report cards. And I don't know if we have that available to be pulled up. So if we could pull that up real quick, and I'm going to ask Ms. Brune to come up. Because at the last board meeting, we talked about the high schools, and specifically Central and Chesterfield, as to why they were identified. And I wanted to ask Ms. Brune to give a little more detail to the board concerning why those scores are where they are because there's some underlying factors that are sometimes, it's beyond the school's control. And I wanted her to kind of explain that to the board as well.
Hey, good evening, everyone. So one thing we wanted to point out about Chesterfield High and Central High Um, so one thing we wanted to point out about Chesterfield High and Central High specifically, the state requires that we test at least ninety-five percent of our students for English II and Algebra I. If you do not test at least ninety-five percent of your students, you will automatically be docked five points in the academic achievement category, which is thirty-five of your hundred points for your report card. Unfortunately, last year, we had that happen at Chesterfield and Central High School. So both of those schools were docked five points. Um, we wanted to point this out because, um, Che- Central High School actually, and Chesterfield High School both showed growth in their academic achievement. But because of those five points that were docked, it looked like they didn't. Um, so we wanted to point that out. Um, you can see on the screen, uh, the potential earnings. Um, Che- Central should have earned six point nine five points instead of the one point nine five that we all looked at last week. Chesterfield should have earned ten point five four points. Um, their overall score at Central should have been forty-two points. They would not have been unsatisfactory had they tested ninety-five percent of their students. They would have been below average, which is actually a point higher than they were in twenty-four. And Chesterfield would still have been average, but they would have had fifty-six points instead of the fifty-one that they earned.
And so some things that cause us to get below that ninety-five percent is, are what? What are some things that we struggle with at the schools? 'Cause a lot of that has to do with transfer students, correct?
Yes, sir.
So if you can kind of explain that a little bit.
Absolutely. So there are different categories that they look at as students who should test in your building. If they are enrolled in that EOC course, they're expected to test. Uh, we talked a lot last month about attendance being a factor, um, virtual students in lieu of expulsion. Um, kids at PLC were not returning back to their home schools to test. So all of those students that did not show up to take their test ultimately counted against us. In addition to the students that we have in our buildings, students who have transferred out of our school district and gone to another school in the state or another school out of state, if we don't have the proper documentation to prove that they have enrolled in another academic institution, they remain our responsibility, especially in their fourth year. So if we have a sophomore that transfers out and we can never track that student down, his fourth year, he will hit us for grad rate. He will hit us for any academic achievement, any EOC tests that he should have taken. Um, so that is something that we are working on now. Um, I'm becoming a little more hands-on with the high schools, trying to help out, um, tracking these kids, making sure that we get the proper documentation to get these kids off of their cohort, that they don't count against us.
And so I just wanted to bring that back to the board to, to give you a better explanation, um, that, from, from our last meeting concerning, uh, the report card. And, and as you can see with, when we get into our high schools, if, if we do have a transfer student, um, and, and we can't track where that student goes, then that student winds up catching us, which can cause us to show that we did not test, even though that student is not in our building and then maybe has not been in our building for some time and is attending a school somewhere else, um, it's still, our schools took the hit. And then as far as the responsibility for us, you know, that we have to do a better job at, is when we have our students that are, um, on virtual in lieu of its, of suspension or expulsion and, um, and/or students that are over at PLC, we have to do a better job to make sure that those students are testing. Um, so that falls on our shoulders, but there's something that we can do to correct. But then there's a piece out there that we're just struggling with because some of that, sometimes you just cannot make those connections with those parents, uh, once they transfer out.
Sorry, that is one thing that we implemented this year is we're actually testing onsite at Pomato Learning Center this year instead of sending them and saying, hey, you need to go to Charro High School to test, and never knowing if they go or not. Where actually, we have a school testing coordinator here who's working with me and I will make sure that those kids are tested onsite so we don't lose them in the process of trying to get them to test.
When a student leaves the school and goes to another school, they have to send for records here, right?
That is what they are supposed to do, yes. And that is what we have to have to get that student off of our cohort. Um, but that does not always happen.
You mean they get enrolled in another school and simply say that I am a science lawyer at this school?
Correct.
Well, how would they know what kind of, uh, subject is it?
That's a great question. I don't know how they're doing that.
Now, was Charro and Macbe aware of the scoring? Because we're only seeing Chesterfield and Central.
Yes, so everyone knows that that's a thing, um, that that's how it's calculated. Um, it's just a matter of the, the student influx that you have in any given year, um, and being able to track those students, number one. And number two, be able to test the students that are still here in our district.
And, and really, the reason I showed these two schools, one, because Central was highlighted because it only showed a one point nine five. Um, and so I wanted to actually show where they would have fallen if this would not have been, uh, the case. So I just, it was just for transparency purposes.
I'm trying to believe that we don't have some kind of fiscal number or whatever. To track, so like, if you say this number to the student, it automatically kind of links that student. You know, kind of like, uh, I guess you got food stamps or whatever, and that student, uh, partner.
Well, most students will have a testing number. And, and most states are set up to where if the student has a testing number here and they go to another county school or another school within the state and that school, and that state, or that school enters that testing number, it should be flagged that now that student is over there. But sometimes what you get, our schools can also issue another testing number, I think. And so, so they're not utilizing other, and, and it's just duplicating, uh, and this is what I've experienced in, in other districts, that state, uh, another school would just give a new testing number. So it never shows that that, and that student is identified with two testing numbers.
And we don't really have, we don't have issues with in-state transfers because if they transfer in-state, they will pop up on a database that I have access to and I can actually track them. Um, it's basically the out-of-state. And with us being so close to the border, um, we tend to lose a lot of kids that way. Um, you know, I'll have principals call me and say, I know this kid's in Michigan. And I'm like, do you have a records request? 'Cause I, I know you know where he is, I know, I know where he is. But if we don't have that actual documentation, the state will, um, not, not remove them from our cohort.
This is not a first-time problem. This has been an ongoing problem for several years.
Now, I will say, up until this last year's report card, we were still working a little bit with COVID waivers. So the, the, the fourth-year students could have potentially not tested because of COVID. So now that we're getting out of that, um, I feel like more kids are hitting us because they're not, they weren't in high school during COVID.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Brune.
Thank you.
The next part of my, um, my superintendent's report is also I wanted to talk about the curfew. And I was gonna ask Dr. King if he wouldn't mind coming back up to the podium for a second to, to just kind of talk about the, the curfew and, and kind of where we've, where we're at. And I, I will kind of help, but he and I have been working on this a little bit together and he's, we've been attending some meetings with the county. Um, he's been working with the SROs on that side of it. Um, but of course, we as, and I want to thank Ms. Gollidge for, for putting together a lot of our, um, material that we sent out to parents to inform them concerning the, uh, upcoming, uh, county ordinance, uh, concerning the curfew. And, and, and we just gave them the educational information concerning as far as who it affects, how it affects, uh, times, um, penalties, um, what is allowed, you know, for students if they're out past a certain time, how that works out. Um, and so we, we did send those out on a regular basis to our parents, uh, for over a couple of weeks. And then I know the county just had their, um,
Third reading.
Their, their third reading plus public hearing on the third, uh, last week. And I think it was approved. And so now, what we will see is it will fall to the, to the towns, to the municipalities, um, to also adopt a similar, uh, ordinance because, uh, they need to adopt that. But, um, Dr. King, anything else you want to discuss or share? Um, how about with our SROs, when, when are we going to be? Or ha- I know we've started with having conversations with our students concerning the curfew.
Yes, sir.
Any, anything else?
Yes, sir. And we just had to make sure that it got through the third reading, um, at the council before, you know, everything got in stone. And as far as when it will be enacted, most of the, the goal is to start at the beginning of the year in January, to start with the district, uh, countywide curfew. And what that boils down to is most, and what a lot of people don't realize is that a lot of your, you know, municipalities have already had curfews. They've just been different times when they're starting. So now this will unify and give everyone in the, the town or municipalities will be in line with the, with the county one, with the county curfew. And that's, and that particularly, that's between eleven AM, I'm sorry, eleven PM and six AM in the mornings. And one of the things that we want to get out in front of, make sure it's not misinformation put out, it's not that they're going after kids or trying to, to, to lock kids up for being out. It's mainly to, it's about safety and making sure that we, we're able to, to hold the ones accountable that need to be held accountable when crimes are being committed. Not necessarily extracurricular or coming back and forth from ball games or doing any of those things. You ain't breaking the law, you shouldn't have any problems. But it's, it's mainly to, to give law enforcement and, and, and have some accountability, um, to where our, our, our youth or our young people are not running rampant without any kind of accountability, um, with the parents. So that's what it boils down to is. And, and our SROs have been communicating that or, or beginning to communicate that with our grade levels, um, because there are some questions about who it will affect or if I'm driving back home from a game, will I get stopped or pulled over, anything like that? And, and it's a lot of language in the ordinance that, that shows how that's not going to affect them at all. But we have had questions. We put FAQs out, um, fact sheets with parents have questions about the curfew and everything. And just being able to educate, and that's as a district, that's our job, that's our goal, is to educate about what's coming. And that's what we've been trying to do, is educate our, our kids and our parents on what's coming down the pipe.
So if I'm called at fifteen after eleven, what are you gonna do, take me home?
You said for you?
I mean, yeah.
You can go anywhere you want to.
I'm speaking of a seventeen-year-old, a sixteen-year-old.
A seventeen-year-old, so a sixteen-
If they're eleven, fifteen, what are you gonna do, take me home?
If they're riding with you?
Yeah, I know that.
Then you, you can go wherever you want to go. But if they're, if they're underage and if they're not committing a crime, because, and one thing that we want to keep in mind, law enforcement, we don't have the manpower to, to, to sit down and, and just be looking for kids that are driving in cars underage or what have you. But it's, if, if you're not breaking the law, then it should not affect you at all.
And it's not like they're going to be out looking.
Correct.
It's just when they come upon somebody, if they are out, um, you know, they will address it at that point in time. But, you know, with our SROs being in our schools, you know, they, they have great relationships with our students. And, and so having them be able to talk, talk through this with students and, and help them to understand and answer questions. And so that's, that's the next piece that, that I know we've already started.
And we will continue to do that.
And we'll continue to, to have those conversations. So, thank you, Dr. King.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the rest of my report, and I'll try to go a little quicker with this. Uh, the end of nine weeks, uh, the last day of school for the semester, which is a half-day, is on December seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, Christmas break is December eighteenth through January the first. January second is an in-service day for staff. January fifth, our students return, uh, from Christmas break. January eighth will be report cards for the first semester. Uh, Ms. Stubbs already mentioned this, the academic bowl recognition is on December sixteenth, starting at five PM at the PLC. And then I did want to just remind parents to please, parents, grandparents, or community members, to please check our web, uh, your child's website for all the events and activities that will be happening throughout the district as we finish this semester. All families are invited and welcome to attend. And that was my report, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Vaughn, our Chief of Human Resources, it's your turn. For personnel exhibits and position changes.
Madam Chair, Dr. Ballinger, members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
Prior to this evening, you received personnel exhibits for your review. I recommend for your approval, Exhibits A through E.
All those in favor? All right.
So with, um, action item B, IEP teams have determined that, um, there are students that have educational needs beyond those currently provided in their classroom with current staff. And the team has asked that we, um, or has decided that the students have additional needs. Uh, there's one student at Macbe and one student at Ruby. And so tonight, I ask for the ability to create positions for those two students to have an educational assistant.
All those in favor?
And with, um, exhibit or action item C, there, um, there's a student, an IEP team at Plainview. The school has determined that, um, it, they have a position that can be repurposed to meet the needs of this student. And I ask your permission, um, to do that, to repurpose that position to use as an educational assistant for the student.
All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Vaughn. All right, Ms. Stubbs, you're gonna come back and talk to us about the twenty-five, twenty-six course catalog.
Uh, so one, one thing that Dr. Ballinger, um, had, had asked, um, of the curriculum team was that we have a comprehensive course guide, um, or a, you know, a course of studies. And so, um, want to give a, a shout-out to Ms. Bruni because she worked very hard, um, to create a comprehensive course guide. Um, we will use this with your approval for, um, the spring semester. Um, and then it'll be our working document that we will, um, use next year. We'll have the, the, um, twenty-six, twenty-seven available, um, in February for your approval. Um, but it shows all of the courses at the high school. Um, it shows where those courses are offered. Um, and Dr. Ballinger's plan is that there be more of an alignment across the district so that these courses, um, that they are not just offered at one or two schools, but that all, all schools across the district. So just wanted to give you that, um, background information. Um, so, um, I am, uh, requesting your approval for the, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six course catalog. Um, and then we will do this again in, uh, February as well.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Dr. King, you're gonna come back for policy revisions, policy KBE second reading.
Yes, ma'am. So board members, you have already been given a copy of policy KBE. At this time, I would like to recommend it as presented for second reading and approval.
Need a motion? All those in favor? Thank you, Dr. King.
Thank you.
All right, now, Dr. Ballinger, um, you're gonna talk to us about the adoption of resolution of facilities committee calendar approval? Well.
I'm not used to action items, sorry.
Well, that says adoption of resolution. Resolution and facilities committee. Yeah, they're, they're together, okay. Give us your report.
Tonight, we're recommending for your approval a resolution that certifies the results of the November twenty-twenty-five bond referendum vote. So, uh, the official results were seventy-seven point eight-five percent in favor of and twenty-two point one-five percent opposed.
Okay, need a motion? All those in favor? All right.
Thank you.
Now. What are you gonna do with the service committee calendar?
Yes, so we, um, you know, as, as you all are aware, uh, we did update our policies to implement a, um, facilities committee and a, um, finance committee. Uh, we are working on the finance committee dates, but we do have the facility committee dates that we wanted to discuss tonight to see if this was fine with the, uh, facilities committee. But what we had talked about was that, uh, the night that we have our board meetings, meet at four o'clock with the facilities committee, uh, before the board meeting. And just wanted to bring this and see if this, um, was good with the board and wanted to go there. And I know you, Mr. Sims, and Ms. Blackwell, I know she's not here, but, uh, wanted to see if that was something we wanted to, to move forward with as far as with the facilities committee.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I need a motion. We accept this calendar for the- All right, I need a motion, we accept this calendar for the facilities committee meetings. All those in favor? All right.
I sure hope you can make the finance committee as convenient as this one because I notice this is only sucking money each month, right before school week.
Yes, sir.
I hope you can make the finance committee just as convenient.
That's why we sent you an email.
Yours is afterwards.
Okay.
All right. All right, December fifteenth will be the superintendent and school board retreat. It will be at five-thirty at the district office boardroom. January twelfth will be our next regular board meeting at PLC, five o'clock, consecutive session followed by our meeting at five-thirty. All right, those of you that want to go to the South Carolina School Board Association Annual Convention at Myrtle Beach, February the nineteenth through the twenty-second, please let Becky know. Registration is open now. All right, now I need a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? All right, thank you so much. We appreciate you coming.